All right, I'm showing five P M. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for being here. Um, this is uh, this is considered a special meeting. The uh, SWIM School Board of Directors and do wanna go over our vision and mission statement. Director Jeffries, would you care to share our vision and mission statement?
Our vision, our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. Our mission, in connection with our community, the SWIM School District empowers staff to inspire hope, provide flexible, innovating learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment, so that each student survive, thrives.
And it survives is good, for sure. Director Roca, would you care to share?
Sure, we acknowledge the land we stand on. The SWIM School District administrative and school buildings sit on the ancestral land of the Skollum people. While the Skollum traditionally come from one nation, history has led to the formation of three sovereigns, Skollum, Callum tribal governments, Lower Elwah, Callum Tribe, Jamestown Skollum Tribe, and Port Gamble Skollum Tribe. The district's primary partnership is with the Jamestown Skollum Tribe. Today, the tribe and the district share a partnership that includes official consultation on program funding changes that may directly affect American Indian and Alaska Native students, as well as holistic services planning for students to remain successful in their educational journeys.
Great, thank you. And I did just briefly want to mention, I did skip past a little bit our uh, meeting guidelines and safety protocol, but um, obviously, and if there's a case, in case of emergency, please exit, the exit closest to you. Um, but also, the purpose of the meeting is for the board to conduct board business, and meeting is open to the public, and it is currently being recorded. And you can listen to all past board meetings, visiting board docs through the district website. And the meeting is also being prevent, presented via Zoom as well. So we also have um, guests joining us uh, via Zoom. With that, believe we can go ahead and go on to our special presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, it is my pleasure tonight to let you know as Board of Directors that our long-range facilities planning group that has been uh, convening for about six months has come up with recommendations uh, that we would like to propose to you as drafts. And these drafts are in regard to where our school district moves forward in its future vision around facilities. Uh, this is the first phase of us coming to you. Uh, tonight will be an introduction from a number of folks engaged with the Long Range Facilities Planning Group so that you can hear about background information and understand how they came to the recommendations that you'll be hearing about. Also, we will be going out for a public comment period for thirty days so that the community wide-ranging will be able to give input on these three different recommendations that you'll hear about. And we will reconvene the Long Range Facilities Planning Group in November to hear the input and regard it in order to make a next-level recommendation toward a potential bond. So this is very exciting news. It has been since nineteen ninety-six, since SWIM School District has passed a bond for facilities. We have had capital levies in the interim that have been successful in helping us to keep things up to a degree. But we all recognize that there are some challenges that our district faces right now with facilities and the Long Range Facilities Group has listened far and wide about those uh, challenges and has some great ideas for you to hear. Like to also let you know that uh, Board President Eric Pickens and Director Michael Roca are on the Long Range Facilities Planning Group. So they'll probably have information to share tonight as well. And we'll have an opportunity for questions from the board. So we look forward to you um, developing those questions along the way and posing those to us tonight. So with that, uh, it is my pleasure to turn this over to uh, our Wenaha team and our Long Range Facilities Planning Group members who will be presenting this evening, both from Zoom and here in the room tonight. Um, I'd like to just take this opportunity to introduce our Long Range Facilities Planning Group members who will be presenting and who are in attendance. So we have Erin Heiner here. We have Dale and Chris White, both here in the back. Tom Kelly is also here with us. And so we appreciate you being with us tonight and for your service on the committee. Okay, Cassie.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Cassie Hibbert with Wenaha Group. And I have my colleague Chris Marfori with me as well. And I'll go ahead and let Chris kick us off by walking us through the agenda for the presentation tonight. Chris, are you there?
Oh, there we go. Apologize, I was currently locked out of unlocking my camera. Uh, appreciate it. Thank you for everybody uh, having us this evening. We'd like to kind of discuss what we're gonna be going off and what you'll be seeing tonight. Uh, first things first, if we'll go to the next slide. Um, the agenda for tonight is to go over the uh, Long Range Facility Planning Group's process and timeline that this uh, this committee had gone through and actually reviewed, uh, in which Cassie will discuss about a little bit later. As well as you'll be ser- seeing the actual draft, draft recommendation presented to you by members of the Long Range Facilities Planning Group, which would be uh, Chris White, Dale White, and Erin Heiner, who are in the room with you today. One of the items I wanted, we wanted to make sure is aware to everybody who is gonna be hearing this, part of, if you can go to the next slide there, Cassie. Uh, the Long Range Facilities Planning Group was a mixed group. Uh, we actually exceeded the minimums that are identified and requested. One being the Superintendent Regan Nichols was, was a part of the group, uh, Certified Staff Member Eric Danielson. Uh, we had uh, one, um, Donna Hudson was a, was part of the process for a majority of it. However, Aaron Fox, Principals Aaron Fox and Rebecca Stanton did join in for some of the last reviews. We had eight community members um, who are listed here throughout different walks of life and volunteered to spend their time uh, with Cassie, myself, the superintendent, whatnot, over the last few months, um, going through the various pieces of information. Uh, as Superintendent Nichols mentioned, two board members joined us for the team, which would be Eric Pickens, Michael Roca, as well as um, we actually had two classified staff members, except one, uh, Erin Heiner, as well as Tom Kelly, and the Director of Facilities and Maintenance, Michael, uh, Mike Santos. Um, three members of Wenaha were helping and assisting with it, Cassie Hibbert, myself, and Heath Gardner. Um, so any information or questions that are passed around, well, may, may, Cassie may pass back to me as we go through this. Uh, so for the actual process and timeline, I'm gonna actually kick it back over to Cass.
Okay, so uh, this slide should be familiar to the board. This is the same slide that we reviewed with you back in June when we did our last formal update regarding the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. And I am pleased to report that we are sticking to the plan in the timeline. So we are here um, back reporting to you. Um, it's March September, but it's October first, so we feel like we're pretty good on that uh, to report back to you on the draft recommendation. Um, on the next slide, I'll walk through uh, specifically the work that has occurred over the past couple of months. Um, but I think this also just bears a, a quick look ahead. Uh, so we're here October first, presenting the draft recommendation. Then the plan, as Superintendent Nichols mentioned, is to go out for a community feedback period during the month of October on the options that you'll be seeing tonight. Then to pull the Long Range Committee back together in November and say, what did we hear out there? Did we hit the mark on this? Do we need to tweak our recommendation? Uh, that's also a uh, off-ramp opportunity and kind of a go-no-go opportunity as well for this group. Um, but if we hear feedback, uh, that is kind of in alignment with the options that you'll see tonight and the committee is able to settle on a single option, then they will make a final recommendation and then plan to bring that back to you in November. Uh, that is also the board's uh, go-no-go point for deciding about putting a measure on the ballot for the February of twenty-five election. Um, because there are filing deadlines in December and then kind of a quick sprint to the February election. And when we finish up the presentation tonight, we'll look at some specific dates related to that, just so the board is aware of those. Thank you. Okay, um, so um, let's talk about what the committee's been up to over the past few months. Um, so the committee has had seven meetings from April to September. And over on the left side is the list of the uh, official charge of the Long Range Facilities Planning Group. But I'm gonna talk more specifically about uh, the specific presentations and uh, building the shared knowledge base that the Long Range Committee uh, tackled. Uh, so seven meetings, um, where uh, we had a variety of presentations, plus there were uh, optional but highly encouraged building tours available to all of our Long Range members to actually get out there in the buildings and take a look and see those uh, buildings for themselves. And those tours are always a very powerful component of this process. Uh, just, you know, there's, there's a lot of data out there, but getting out there and being in the buildings is uh, and looking at them with an intention is a, a very powerful experience. So the subject matter presentations uh, that the committee went through uh, were first up, a district bond and capital levy history. That was presented by the district. Uh, we had the district's uh, financial advisor, D A Davidson, do a couple of presentations about bond and levy finance. So the committee was up to speed on that. Uh, we had a population projection section with David Swanson. Uh, Wenaha Group, we did the Certified Building Condition Assessment, so we also reported back on that to the committee. Uh, we had Progressive Strategies Northwest come in and report on voter demographics in the area. And then finally, Wenaha Group presented on public projects and prevailing wage considerations in the state of Washington. And then in addition to all of those subject matter presentations, we did a series of prioritizations, reviewing design options uh, and settling on the draft recommendation. Okay, before we jump into draft recommendation, I, I just wanted to pause real quick and pull out one of those subject matter items. We're not gonna go in deep on all of those subject matter items because we spent seven whole meetings with the, the committee doing that, um, and a lot of those, I believe, are items the board is already aware of. But this one I wanted to pull out in particular to just set the stage for the conversations we'll have next. And this is an item that the committee had really flagged as being an important part in strategy of how to discuss this request to the community for capital projects. So over on the left side of the slide, you can see, uh, this is the district's um, uh, historical uh, school taxes for the community. And you can see it's varied a little bit over the years. And in these bars is your E P N O levy, which I know that D A Davidson is going to come back and talk with you next week regarding that. Um, but your E P N O, your capital projects levy that you've had for the past few years, uh, a transportation levy that you had a little while back. And then there's uh, also a section in here for school bond, which you haven't had one lately. And out of all of this, you can see in the red box that SWIM's local tax rate is one of the lower investment rates within the state of Washington, and that's something that the, the committee flagged. And then over on the right side, uh, just to recap on, on where we are in your current capital projects levy. So that was, that levy is going to sunset in twenty-twenty-five. So that will be the last year that voters will make contributions to that. And when it was approved, it was at a rate of sixty-three cents per a thousand assessed value. And just due to the assessed value growth in your community, that has decreased just over that five-year span. And for next year, it is projected to be about forty-two cents per a thousand assessed value. And then that will sunset in twenty-twenty-five and fall off the books. So with this uh, bond project that will be a, uh, part of this draft recommendation, uh, for a February twenty-five election, the payments, taxpayer payments for the bond would start in the year of twenty-twenty-six. So that's very intentional to kind of pick up basically where the levy left off. And I think when we look at the, the recommendations here that our volunteers will be bringing to you, I'd like to have you kind of keep that in the back of your mind. This is what you're already currently paying for the levy that will end, and then the bond proposal would then start and be almost sort of seamless from a taxpayer standpoint. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to call up our three volunteers from the Long Range Committee. And before they present the uh, specifics of the draft recommendation, uh, we'd like to have each one of them, uh, just talk a little bit to their experience with the process and uh, what they had uh, learned as part of that. And I'm gonna go to my notes here. So we had Chris going first, uh, Erin going second, and Dale going third on this. So I'll turn it over to you all.
Hi, thank you, Cassie. You guys hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, good evening. Thanks for having us here today. Um, we're happy to be here. My name's Chris White. Um, I was happy to find about this uh, group that was coming together, so I applied. Uh, reason is I have two kids in the district now and one more joining in a couple of years. Um, just wanted to do something great for our students, and this was a great way to get plugged into the community and kind of help out behind the scenes. So thank you very much for having us.
My name's Erin Heiner. I am a SWIM High School alum, graduating way back in ninety-eight. Um, I also have two children in the district, one student at Helen Howler and one at the middle school. I am active in the um, elementary P T A, and I also work at Gray Wolf. So I am thoroughly invested in this district in many levels and want nothing more for it to be the strongest, most possible district we could possibly have. And I feel a part of that is having nice facilities that we will hopefully be passing forward with this bond.
Hello, my name is Dale White. I'm retired. My wife and I moved up to SWIM a couple of years ago, and I bribed my son, Chris White. You can tell by the family resemblance to come up and bring our grandkids. And to be honest with you, until the grandkids come up, didn't care about the schools. I just care a lot now. You can go ahead and good start. Next slide, please. So as you know, getting any group together and trying to come up with a decision that we all agree on is very difficult. And it was very difficult with this group in the beginning until we started visiting the schools and actually going out and seeing them. And one of the best things we did is we had students come in and talk to us about the schools and how they felt about them, what they thought. And then we actually came together and had an agreement with option one. Option one, we thought was, be the very minimum we should do for our kids in this community. And it was, uh, after looking at uh, Helen Howler, we basically had the decision, talking with some experts in the field, it didn't make any sense to try and repair this school. It's at end of life. It has been taken care of. It's not like it was neglected. It was built for a time way back then, not today. The bathrooms, the asbestos, the electrical, the air conditioning, the heating, the building itself. It's not worth repairing. We would spend so much repairing it, it would not last. The decision was, this needs to be replaced. The second big decision was buildings A, B, C, and D, and E need to be replaced. They're the oldest buildings on the campus. And these are some of the strongest buildings that students really need. These are the ones, the sciences, where they go in and they make decisions for their career. What am I gonna do in college? And they overwhelmingly came back to us, the students, and said, you know, these are the buildings that we love. These are the buildings we really want to learn in. And they're just not up to the fact. They just aren't. And what a great job the students are doing, trying to make do with what they have, and especially the teachers. So impressed with the teachers that are teaching at these different schools. The other thing was for safety's sake, and that was the bus loop. That was basically to connect all three schools in a way to keep the traffic off the main streets in the area and also keep the students off the main streets in the area. From a safety perspective, this seemed like a slam dunk, actually. It's something that really would improve the school system there. It would really improve the flow of traffic around, which would affect everybody in the area, whoever gets stuck behind the buses or the kids come and go. And so we thought as a very minimum, option one, this is what needed to be done. Of course, we came up with some other options too. And Chris is gonna talk to you about option number two we came up with.
Thank you very much. Um, you'll see one of the biggest changes on option two is the addition of a multi-sport athletic facility upgrade package. Um, speaking with students and other people in the community, we wanted something that was a point of pride, not just for students, but for everyone around. One way we can do that is through an upgrade of the stadium facility, the fields, allowing us to actually host district games, home games, um, giving the community a place to enjoy, not just for students as well, but it was something that we thought would be great to have. It's not necessarily a dire need like option one, but it's something that could definitely raise the community value in the property. And then we also had a little bit more, and Erin's gonna talk about that.
Right, our third option are the Cadillac option that included everything that we identified as points of um, improvement or replacement, obviously including everything from options one or two. And then this also actually also moves to Gray Wolf and doing some improvements out of Gray Wolf. The facility is, uh, let's see, thirty years old, thirty-three years old. And so it's starting to show a little wear and tear. Um, the bus loop right now is not exactly ideal. The traffic flow is not well. If anyone has been at Gray Wolf at drop-off or pickup time, it is, there's kids walking out where cars are driving. It's just not a safe situation right now. Um, so we would look to improve that. Also, right now, Gray Wolf is the only school in the district where the children eat their lunches in the classroom. Um, this impedes just because then there's a lot of mess in the classrooms that's being dealt with. It's a lot more work for the cafeteria staff. It's a lot more work for the teachers. It actually means there's a lot more hands-on needed for lunch coverage because there has to be an adult in every single room. So having one unified cafeteria space for the building. Um, also, the H VAC um, at Gray Wolf is very tired. And there are rooms that in the winter, you're bundled up and freezing all day long. Or like just in the last summer, we were hot and just dying. Um, if anybody has gone up to the traffic, um, transportation center up on the hill, um, it is a very dark, old, cold building, close and near to being condemned. Um, so improving that, um, Larry, I appreciate it actually when you misspoke and said, safety of our students because bus system and having a properly maintained and functioning bus system and maintenance facility is important to the safety of our children. So that would be including, the third option includes everything. And what I appreciated about all three of our options, Cassie, if we could go to the next slide, is the difference from option one, which we identified as being the minimum and the option to what we identified as everything we needed, it's only twenty cents difference. For me, as not just a parent, but as a community member, um, investing in our community for just that extra twenty cents per thousand assessed value says not only to the kids, we care about you, we care about your future, we want to invest in you. It also is us looking out to our community, growing to professionals coming to the area with their own children and looking at our facilities and saying, yes, this is a district that I want my children to attend to. So this is also a chance to um, help grow our community as a whole by doing that extra bit of investment. Um, and like Cassie said, mentioned, when the current levy was appraised, it was at sixty-three cents. It is now down to forty-two cents with the projected um, new developments that have just been approved in the area. We are also going to, hopefully, with those beings, those buildings selling and new homes going up, our actual, um, our tax base will also be expanding. So the potential of it going from ninety-one cents to actually going lower is pretty not dependable, but pretty likely. So, and I believe that was, we were moving on to questions.
Thank you very much to all of our L R F P G presenters. Um, I would like to share uh, where we go from here regarding these recommendations. So of course, uh, what you see first and foremost is October community feedback. So we will be seeking feedback in many different ways. We're having the announcement tonight of the draft recommendation. We will be getting out uh, this week to give staff updates at each building. So staff are hearing from us uh, this very week. Uh, we'll be having listening tours with many different groups throughout the month and really uh, reaching out to folks through two public forum opportunities on October eighth and on October fifteenth. One at Helen Howler and one at the high school so that people can see the spaces as well as discuss them. Uh, we'll be making sure social, social media is very well aware of what we're doing, what the facts are here with this recommendation. And then we have newspaper, radio, and a podcast um, opportunities that will be coming so that we are informing our community. And then uh, we'll have a lot of school events. You know, October is a time where we've had some open houses, but we might have other opportunities where people are visiting schools. And we want folks to be able to look around, see what there is to be seen, ask the questions about the facilities um, live and in person, and then make sure that we introduce a community survey. So the community survey will be coming out uh, probably by next week. The community survey will be comprehensive and will seek input about a lot of different aspects, not just the recommendations, but also what are the interests that our community has around school improvement. And of course, these presentations uh, in the community, I'd like to invite board members to certainly attend as they would like and to hear firsthand what our community members and stakeholders are interested in discussing and may have as questions around the different aspects. Now that's October. Then we get to November, and on November twelfth, the Long Range Facilities Planning Group will reconvene and will be reviewing all of the feedback collected in October. That uh, meeting will be a very important one because it will be coming forth with a recommendation to the board about what a potential final resolution could be for a bond. November eighteenth will be your board meeting where that recommendation will come. And you will have a decision-making to consider at that meeting or at the latest of the first December meeting, because we do have a December um, thirteen filing requirement that we had to meet. So um, it'll be a busy two months ahead. And then in January and February, depending on what your decision is regarding moving forward, if you have decided to uh, forward a resolution and we're moving forward toward a bond, we'll be making all of that community feedback recircling. We'll be going back to the community, talking to them about the decision and why, hearing any questions and making sure we're answering those, and moving to a February eleventh election. So that brings us to the end, and we're happy to take questions. Remember, we do have Wenaha on so that they can assist with answering any particulars you might have, and you can uh, take it from here.
All right. Questions? First of all, I want to thank the committee for all their hard work and time spent learning about this work. My guess is you may know a lot more about the ins and outs of facilities and bonds and levies and that, that the board does. So I really appreciate your work and looking forward to your recommendations. Um, at this point in time, are we, are we locked into those three recommendations and/or depending on what we hear back from the community, we might um, make some modifications?
Great question. We're not locked into anything. Uh, these are simply put, recommendations, proposals, if you will. And uh, the survey that will go out will actually have opportunity for community members to give more information about what they would like to see prioritized. They will also be able to weigh in on these packages and say what they see in them that is uh, working for them and not. But the Long Range Facilities Group will reconvene and can make any decision uh, from the feedback.
And so far, they've basically been looking at um, facilities and not necessarily programs?
Correct. Uh, there has been some level of nexus, and you heard it um, today from Dale about the students. And the students did come and present, and they talked at times about how programs might be either impeded or could be helped with improvements. So we do want to pay attention to those angles, but it's mainly facilities.
And I was looking at, well, like the um, Helen Howler replacement. Program-wise, I assume we're, we may, we could change our structure. So we would be building a very different school if it's a three, four, five school. Or if it's a K one, two, three, four, five school, or we had decided that's gonna be our K one, two, three school, that sort of decision. It would go into um, what kind of school we're gonna build. And I, I think we need to have that discussion just to make sure we're committed to um, a vision of, of what our schools are gonna look like. I mean, as a board member, I'm, I'm looking at to the future sustainability, how we spend our money.
So we did have uh, uh, popul- So we did have a population projections brought to the committee and had an entire presentation on that. And we do see that our student population right now is going to be quite predictable and relatively flat with slight increase. So we're lucky. We're not a community that's likely going to face a dramatic regression in our enrollment. But the committee was considering the schools for the grade levels that they serve now. All of the schools were evaluated that way.
And we don't foresee a large influx and or change in our student demographics? Given the developments that, that Aaron talked about?
Actually, that was an interesting presentation from the population projector that the number of developments that are coming into our community will likely not house as many children. Not because they couldn't, because the birth rate has dropped globally to the degree that there aren't the children to move to swim. So we aren't seeing that we'll have an incredible increase from these developments. Will we have slight increase? Yes, that is the projection.
The other, the other piece to consider too, and we had, we had a lot of discussion about this with the committee is some of the, the details about how exactly the space will be used, how, what the layout will look like. A lot of that will come much later in the process as well. It's, um, so when you talk about the, the program and how it's designed, actually what we are looking at here is more just a square, more of a square footage conversation and serving elementary clearly, but not the, not necessarily all the specifics because of that, we would want to do that after the bond is passed. And then obviously get feed, feedback from more staff and administrators and everybody in that process.
Well, I do have some concerns about that going to the public and saying, we want a hundred million dollars, but we'll tell you later what it's for. I mean, specifics, I think the specifics are important. You know, what kind of elementary school are we going to build? Not just square footage, but what programs is it going to serve? And this is why it's going to cost this X amount of dollars and so on. The other thing I was concerned, talking about safety and thrive and survive. I have great concerns about the state of the transportation center, the bus garage. And it's, um, that may, you may want to put that much higher on our list because of the age of it and the condition of it and the renovation and replacement of that area out there would have concerns about. But I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm not surprised by anything that's on the list. But I'd like to, I'll look forward to learning more about what's on the list and what, what the rationale behind it is for asking our voters, our taxpayers for money to replace, improve, we, it all with the goal of improving education for the kids.
Chris?
I just wanted to identify one item that we didn't really touch on. But so for the scaling and size of the facilities for the, the budgetary numbers we put together is based on standardization to current standards. And it is an increase in the general size of the facility just because of the standards and expectations that have increased in the last fifty years since Helen Haller was originally, well, seventy years actually, since the first buildings were built. But it is not in any way, shape or form defined in a way that can't be reviewed in any programmatic decisions implemented into what the actual final decisions are. Nothing of that sort has been defined where it can't be where the decision is made now and you can't change it later. Everything right now is you're based on the concept of being able to give you the ability to really figure that out.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I would just like to add something there about, because I was thinking about that too in terms of, I think it's great that all of these, all A, B, C, D and E would be replaced. I think that's terrific for the high school. And immediately I started thinking, what is that going to look like? But it seems to me that what we're doing here is we're trying to discern the will of the community to simply move forward on really transforming our local education buildings. And that it will take time and a lot of back and forth to discover exactly what that is going to look like. And it's good to start with a budget that we would have a certain amount of money to work within. So I think we're going about it in the right order of steps. And I'll be really curious to know what the community wants to see and what the staff wants to see. But I do think the money has to come first before you do all of the, you know, design implementation and figure out, because you have to think about, well, safety issues. This is a real opportunity to rethink about the high school and about Helen Haller in terms of just basic safety for students. Again, coming back to survival and safety, those issues. But I think those come with time and at first we just have to know what the will of the community is.
Looks like Cassie had her hand up.
Sure. So it's very common for districts to put together general budget numbers prior to the bond passing and then start a more robust design process after the bond passes. And the reason for that is that to do a robust design process does take a commitment of resources, both financial and time on a district side. And it's really important to have a thorough design process that involves all of your community stakeholders. But it's, it's really common for that to happen after the bond passes because the bond can help provide those resources in order to do that design process. But to the earlier point, it's, it's also important for the community to know what they are buying. So what we are hoping to provide with these budget numbers is that, to use Helen Haller as an example, this would be to replace the school on the existing site with a certain square footage target and a certain budget number. And then the full design on that would come later.
Would you have any?
I just, I was just curious. You know, you were talking about replacing Helen Haller on the same site. So, and again, I'm sure this is mostly a process that happens after the bond is passed, but do you have just any ballpark idea of timing of something like this? If, for example, the bond did pass in February, what would it look like in terms, and also sequencing, like, I mean, I assume you wouldn't be doing Helen Haller and the high school at the same time with all of the disruption that that would cause. Even though, you know, ideally, obviously the sooner the better for all of it, but can you just talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So we have in the background started mapping out a draft project schedule inclusive of design and construction for these projects. I, I don't think we're quite ready to go live with that, but if that's of interest to the board, we could bring that back to you as part of the November update.
Okay, thank you.
I actually would like to add one item to that is that this goes back to the conversation of speaking with stakeholders. There's a lot of major variables to that question that you asked of timing. A great example be, being we're talking about replacing Helen Haller on the same land, but not in the same spot. And so that means that you have an existing facility that stays in place. That's a decision and that's a decision that has to go to the stakeholders. And while we've put together proposed ideas of what that could be, nothing's bound to it has to be. And so it's the same thing with timelines. Anything that we were to publish really comes down to what the, what the needs are and what's reasonable against the timelines with the decisions being made. So there's a lot of variables that could come into play with the actual timelines of the projects.
Michael, I think you answered.
And I was going to say, as being part of the committee and observing the discussions, it is important to remember that even the top option wasn't like, you know, a wish list. They were, the, the committee did a very good job of looking even that top option when we said, oh, it was everything that we needed. Not really. It was everything that they can minimize down to say, what, what is that bottom level where we can get our, our, our schools in a healthy position? And then, you know, there probably would be some upgrades and stuff that has to happen later years or stuff. But it, they really were trying to be responsible with the amounts. And I think that's why you don't see these huge increases up to, you know, one fifty, one, you know, one sixty, two hundred million or whatever. You could spend it easily here, but they were really trying to think, what are the minimums amount that we need to get our stuff? And then so they started with those schools, you know, then they, they threw in the, you know, are people interested in this, in, in the athletic facilities? And then the final one would still kind of these bare minimums to get our, you know, our, our, our facilities like the HVAC improvements and cafeteria so the kids have somewhere to eat and stuff. None of these are luxuries. You'd expect them in most standard schools and all it is is bringing us up from seventy years ago. You know, you look at some of these dials, you look like you're on a submarine for, you know, because they're so old and it's, it was kind of cool to see, but not cool when you're thinking, this is what our kids are depending on, right? Even little things. And then the final thing I wanted to say is one thing that we see is when we start spending money, as we've talked about, doing things, then we have to go back and redo that or redo it with the bond. And I think we want to get rid of that, you know, spending that we have to do to have a safe environment for our children, but yet you know, I don't know, it just, I, I think they were, I want to hit that they were being very, very responsible. None of these numbers, there, there was a lot bigger numbers when they pared it down to these, these were reasonable, trying to be fiscally responsible with all the money. And that is my main point. That's all I have.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I just want to speak a little more to that. We didn't start off with, okay, this is what we want, wanting to back into recommending this. We were blank slate, looking at every facility, different reports on every building. It wasn't just, this is what we want and how are we going to ask the board for it? It really was a process of seeing the state of things in person and realizing that they just weren't acceptable. And for the money, we had, um, we had ideas that came up that we're like, that number seems ridiculous. What's the bare minimum we can do to make sure we're not just putting a Band-Aid on this? But to give us a facility that's going to last, that's not some out of this world thing that we don't need, but something that we're not going to have to be constantly repairing and fixing. You know, things like that. We did, we took everything into consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll share that the, I, I find that, I, I just value the, the committee's work on this. We had just a lot of different, a lot of variety, a lot of perspectives on the committee. We have, you know, folks who have, have kids, folks who don't have kids and just, you know, there was just that broad coalition was inspiring in a way to just know there's, we have, we have, you know, it's not, this isn't just a, a board vision. It's not just about, it's, we have the whole, you know, community involved and, and thinking that it is time. And the other piece is that when we looked, there were some aerial views that showed like layouts of what, what it could look like. I think it's also important to know that, because there may be folks in our community that, that will look at something and, well, you know, I don't think it should be right there. I think it should be. And, and there may be valid reasons for that, that we will definitely explore and look into. But I just think it's important that our community knows at this stage, these are, these are just kind of, do we have the space to, to build it some while we're having school? Yes, we do. And the layout's probably almost for sure not going to look like exactly as it's laid out on the, the presentation. So I think that's just an important thing to know.
And to that, I'd say the layouts also are indicative of priorities. So traffic flow, traffic frustrations, efficiency of how we're moving students and helping to have the shared pickup and drop off that we have in this era. We really did prioritize that on each of the campuses that we're talking about. Some of the discussions that also occurred were around not just safety and security. That's of course critical and important and any new modern facility would regard that. So we knew it. But thinking about buildings that might not be receiving that level of new construction or overhaul, how do we also still be attentive there? And then making sure that we had modern systems in our building. One thing I'd like to share is we're not here today to complain about each of the little things that we are Band-Aiding in the school district because I think we've got some really good preventative maintenance going on. But the truth is we have systems that need to be fixed because they're obsolete. And we can't access them. When you have your plumbing in a slab, you're not getting to it to fix that, right? When you have remiculite in your walls, you're not tearing those down and doing wiring in there again. So we have to think bigger and what are those systems replacements that need to be modernized?
One thing I neglected to mention and I should have, and when the, when the screen popped up here to how much I'm pleased with and appreciate and amazed with what Wenaha does and the service that and expertise they provide us. And I also, I mean, finding Mike Santos in the community and getting him on board. Actually, you know, getting Regan on board, a superintendent and lots of changes that have occurred and in the district, I think have set us up. When I first moved here or came to town in two thousand and eleven, that was and being in education, one of my question is, how did Swim, this was you know, ten, eleven years ago, how did Swim let their facilities get in this condition? Because I was used to schools being replaced on a regular basis and, you know, being rebuilt and that, and didn't think that was going on. And I didn't really get a good answer, but I was amazed with, somebody mentioned it about in spite of the facilities, what an amazing job the teachers and the kids are doing in substandard facilities. And in spite of that, some excellent education is going on. However, it's time to take a close look at the future and put some investment, I think, into our facilities to allow that to continue. So I appreciate the committee, appreciate Wenaha, and I appreciate the administration for the, the work that they put in. Yes, we have to make a decision, but it sure makes our decision clearer, easier when that time comes. I really appreciate that.
Well, I would echo that the work with Wenaha has been very productive and efficient. To have made this much progress in six months is quite something. And the leadership that they have shown around curating each of our meeting agendas so that we are well planned going into them and also set up to have excellent facilitation. It's been very productive. So I, I echo your sentiments.
I just wanted to add that I really do appreciate the committee and all of their hard work and these, just the, the thoroughness of what you've come up with here. It's just so impressive to me. And one of the things just comes to mind when I think about replacing these buildings is to keep in mind how new buildings will be far less expensive to run. So in the long run, we're really saving the district quite a bit once we get these new structures in place because in all kinds of ways, energy reduction, all kinds of ways, these buildings will be easier and less expensive for the district to maintain.
Absolutely. Any other, any other thoughts or questions from the board?
I just, I just would want to note that last, I think it's the last slide or second, one of the last ones that talks about the bonded, bond option comparison. I appreciate what Michael and, and Chris were both saying about that, you know, this is really that they were very mindful, that the committee was mindful of trying to provide the best possible product for the community with the, at, at the most reasonable rate and the most reasonable cost. And so to me to see that, you know, people are, taxpayers are already paying, you know, initially sixty-three cents or whatever it was, and now forty-something cents for a thousand dollars of assessed value and that this, you know, the bond option of even number one is seventy-one cents and it, you know, to actually have this calculation presented that this is three hundred and fifty-five dollars a year for somebody who owns a five hundred thousand dollar house. And when you think of how valuable that would be to the community, it's a, you know, I mean, it's all, taxes are heavy lift. I'm very sensitive to the fact that people are concerned about taxes and, and you know, but this is something where you will really see a tangible improvement in our community for, you know, what appears to be a reasonable improvement in our community for, you know, what appears to be a reasonable and well thought out investment amount for any of these options, one or two or three. It feels like that the committee was really trying to figure out, how can we provide the most benefit to the community? While still being mindful of the fact that we're asking the taxpayers to make this, this investment. So thank you for that and Michael and Eric both, and the other committee members. I feel like that. Because obviously, at the end of the day, what we need to do is persuade the taxpayers that this is an investment that, that they should make. And, and the first thing that they need to understand is that, you know, we appreciate that, you know, that, that that's what we're asking and we, but what we're going to be providing is something that, you know, as Martin was saying, even by having more efficient buildings, we'll be saving on the cost of constant repairs, constant, you know, trying to find parts for, you know, and, and obviously the expensive, trying to provide even heat and cooling in a building that's not well insulated. You know, I mean, there's a million things like that. And plus just the, the just the impact on people who are considering coming to the community, who have children, who come and see, oh, look at, this is a community that cares about its children, that cares about its future, that is investing in making this the best possible place for a family to rate, for, for, you know, for a family to raise their children. That, that's an intangible, but I think it's really important. So, anyway, thank you. I think that's, that reflects a good values on the part of the people in this committee.
I think that's an important layer and I'm glad you brought that up because you, you, do, do we, I, do we owe it to the, the kids that we're serving? Absolutely, right? And, and the staff and everything. But I know I talk to community members all the time that talk about our ability to, to recruit. You know, we, we need more, more healthcare professionals in the area. We need all these big common denominator that folks will look at when they decide if they want to come to an area is, you know, public schools in the area, they're going to, they're going to take a look, right? And so, so I think that's, that's another benefit of making this investment is that's going to have a, have an effect on that as well. So.
And, and I contend, healthy school, healthy school makes for a healthy economic community, whether they have kids or not. It's just, you know, healthy parks, healthy schools, healthy library is going in across the street. You know, those kinds of things make this community a desirable place and a better place to live for everybody, all ages. I'm, I'm enthused by this process and the work done and the thought gone into it.
Okay, well, Cassie or Chris, any closing thoughts?
No, thank you. It's been a privilege to work with the school district in this process and looking forward to some community feedback.
And our presenters, any last thoughts you're having? Okay, we appreciate. All right. So those recommendations will now go forth into the community. We'll start collecting feedback about them. And we're very interested to hear and the word investment that came up tonight, I think investment is what the topic of the day is about. We have staff and we have students who are investing every day in what we are developing and trying to grow. And this is just the next layer for us to be able to give our students environment that is worthy of all of the effort they're putting in. But also it is something that will develop our community because one of the best economic drivers of any community is at schools. So we'll keep that in mind too. All right. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. And I believe that about covers everything, right? So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn.